We'll call the meeting to order of the City of Atwater City Council, August 25, 2014, at 6:03. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Mayor Portam-Moonieham. Please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fathers, we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. We do pray tonight, as we're in this meeting, that, Lord, that you give our council members them wisdom as they decide the fares of our city. We thank you for them and their service. We do pray for our police that are out on patrol now, that you'd protect them, build a hedge around them, protect them, bring them home safely. We pray to be with their families as well. And while we pray for our fire, Lord, that risks their lives, we ask that you have your hand upon them and protect them as well. We do pray for the earthquake that took place. We ask, Lord, that you be with those that were injured and also those that lost property. We, Lord, ask that you work your perfect will and way in their lives. We also pray that you watch over us tonight, and everything that we say and do tonight will be that to glorify thy name, for we do ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call. Berkman?
Here.
Moonieham?
Here.
Jeff Rivero?
Here.
Joe Rivero?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much for all of you coming out this evening and participating in our city council meeting. We have the mayor's or deputy city attorneys report out from closed session. No reportable action was taken. Staff was given direction. Approval of the agenda as posted or as amended. This is the time in which the city council has the opportunity to remove an item from the agenda or change the order of the agenda. City council persons, would you please review the agenda if you have, if you wish to change an item or pull an item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Berkman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Portam-Moonieham. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the question. Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Moonieham?
Yes.
Berkman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ceremonial matters. Presentation of Jadeve Church for his 28 years of service to our community. Would Mr. Church please come forward? Dave? Okay, then we'll move to the junior giants, and maybe by that time Dave will be here. Okay, can we have the, let's see, Mr. Jeff Rivero, how do we, do we want to have all of the junior giants come forward? And I have a list of people that we're going to be recognizing.
Sounds good.
Okay? Thank you. This is a wonderful, wonderful organization, Junior Giants. And I think we have Mr. Jeff Hammer, who can come forward, please, and to recognize is probably one of the instigators of the Junior Giants program. We have also, O'Haffer was another one of the instigators of the Junior Giants, and I think, Mr. Jeff. What's wrong with you, Mr. Hoffer? Thank you.
That's all right. You got the job.
How many people do we have participating in Junior Giants this year, Mr. Hammer?
There's over 500.
500 people, just in this year, right? 2014, 500 people. So, and it's about 10 years old, right, Mr. Hammer?
Actually, we just finished our 12th season.
12th season, fantastic. So you can times that by 500 and figure out how many youth we have served. So what an honor, and we just want to thank everybody who's participated, not only the coordinators and all of those people, but the little people, the little students who've done such a wonderful job. So, Mr. Councilman Jeff Rivero and I are going to kind of do this in tandem. I'll read the names, you hand out the certificates. Please?
I mean, in order?
Yep. It's supposed to be in that order. Let's check and see. Hey, what do you know? First, right. Mr. Baywood Ward Boykin, fundraiser coordinator. Where is Mr. Boykin?
He's at the family.
Okay, fine. Mr. Hammer, you're going to take care of delivering all of the ones that are not given to you. Mr. Hammer, as everybody knows, it's a joke around the City of Atwater, he was a student of mine. So, and I'm very proud of Mr. Hammer. Yes.
That's true.
And look how well they all turned out. Thank you very much. Moving on, Frank Cordinas, coach coordinator, major senior coach representative, Mr. Cordinas. Javier Cordinas, player representative. Javier?
Mr. Cordinas?
He's at football.
Oh, he's at football, okay. I love these people that they're in so many different activities, but it's wonderful what the time they give to the community. Willie Cortez, coach coordinator, T-ball.
He's at football.
Okay, he's coaching football, okay? Wonderful. Nikki Cortez, coach coordinator. She probably has cheerleaders. Okay? Jeffrey Hammer, league commissioner. Summer?
Hip Schmidt.
Hip Schmidt.
I'm with the two little hammers.
Okay. Oh, okay. Steve Jensen, assistant commissioner, T-ball. Steve Jensen.
He's at home with.
Mrs.?
Everybody got their summer cold after they did their service this summer working with the Giants.
Good. Thank you. Thank God they got it after, they got it done. Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones?
He's at the doctors.
Mrs. Jones is at the doc. Okay? We have Caroline, Carolyn Maraz.
That's not her.
Caroline, health coordinator.
She's from Turlock.
Health coordinator, okay? And then we have Mr. Nowetski, pal director.
He's probably on duty.
Okay? And we have Lindsay Swanson, coach coordinator, minors. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have Kay Lee Swanson, player representative. We have Lou Taylor, concession co-coordinator. Mrs. Taylor? John Yubera, assistant commissioner, minors. Veronica Yubera, scholarship coordinator, Junior Giants ambassador. What a wonderful group of individuals, and just think, we have about half of them that aren't here. So we missed some people.
Lorena.
Lorena! Come on.
Reading coordinator.
Reading coordinator.
Thank you.
We will get your certificate in the mail. Okay, who else did we miss?
Mr. Hammer?
We have some coaches that weren't with David.
Okay.
Players.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, yes, this young lady in blue here.
We're getting Nowetski.
Oh! Right over here. Be fine, right there. Okay. Bye. Okay, we ready to, did you find Mr. Nowetski's? What is your name?
Trisha.
Trisha.
Cecina.
Cecina?
I don't know.
Perfectly, I'm from Nowetski. It's kind of neat about this group of individuals, they do more than just playing the T-ball and the baseball and everything. They have a reading program, they have all kinds of programs throughout the year, so it's just. Thank you. Mr. Hammer, would you introduce these wonderful people to my right, and then would you please give us a little background on the? You forgot their names.
Coach Tricia.
Coach Tricia? Coach Christina.
Christina's last name. Everybody knows Coach Christina.
Bejarano.
Cecina.
I'm going to give it to you and let you kind of give a little roundup of what's been happening.
Real quick, Junior Giants is celebrating their 20th year running their program. Atwater's celebrating its 12th. And roughly over 12 years, each year, I would say, between uniforms, equipment, and incentives, the City of Atwater, at least this program and the kids that are in it, probably get close to $10,000 worth of items every year for free to provide for the kids of this community. So it's played huge dividends. Our kids, a lot of them got to, have gotten to experience their first game ever in their life, and if, you know, everybody talks about that moment where they go to their first ballgame or remember their first game. We actually had 38 get to watch the perfect game that Matt Payne, Matt King pitched for free. So our kids, in 12 years, have shot a nationalized TV program, What Not to Wear, redo your spouse. Our kids were invited to participate when they were the host of the All-Stars. We had a group of players that were bussed up to the All-Star clinic, and all week long, their fan fest, All-Star fan fest, along with their families. Shot commercials for the Grizzlies. We've also done Willie McCovey Awards. So every year, we have a Willie McCovey Award there, and they get to go have lunch with Willie McCovey. Actually, Ms. Paul got to go on that trip one year. Joe Hopper, John Yubera, myself, and our recent Willie McRiver winners, Coach Cordinas. Some of our players that have got to go on to the next levels for scholarships is what they offer. We have Veronica Yubera, who is a scholarship winner as a player. She's grown up through the league. She's actually employed with the Giants this year as an ambassador representing the Junior Giants program. So this little nine-year-old that started this program is now working with them. She got a $2,500 scholarship. Javier Cordinas is a $5,000 winner for the scholarship program. So this is the type of money that the San Francisco Giants invest in the kids in our community. So it's a program that's worthwhile. It's beyond the classroom. It's a summer school program that's ran free. And all I can say is thank you to Atwater Pal for your continued support for the kids in our program and our leadership for keeping it going, and thank you guys so much.
I just wanted to thank everybody that's involved in Junior Giants. That was one of the best days I've ever spent on a sporting activity, was when we were able to take our kids down to AT&amp;T Park, and they actually played down on the field where Bonds and all the other players that are playing now were able to participate, and our kids had such a great time. And it's amazing how much the Junior Giants or the San Francisco organization puts into our kids. They gave them all books, pens, hats, everything you could think of down there at AT&amp;T Park, and they were really trying to help out with reading awareness and violence, trying to get people to calm down before they get too upset. So it's just amazing what this organization's doing for our town, and that's one reason why hopefully it's the next meeting that we'll have the name in a day or a week after the Junior Giants in the City of Atwater, because these people, for 12 years, have helped kids off the streets, getting them to do things in a positive light instead of a negative. They've put tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars into these kids, and the City of Atwater is very appreciative, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. And when you hear the advertisements on the radio about Junior Giants, about donating your cars to Junior Giants, this is what results of your money that if you donate to Junior Giants, you get it back, and that's what's so neat about it. And we just want to thank the Junior Giants for these wonderful people and Mr. Hoffer.
Just quickly, that Jeff never says anything about himself. Right, guys?
That's right.
Right, right. Well, he is one of a few on, actually, in the Junior Giants Hall of Fame. So, good going, Jeff.
Thanks for all your help. Appreciate it.
With that, we'd like to give them another round of applause and thank them for coming, and thank all of you for coming. Thank you very, very much. We'll recognize him at our next meeting, so thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item that is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until the item is called, then stand right behind Mr. Price so that I know that you're ready, you wish to speak. And so please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes, and please state your name and address. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim Price, 3467 Village Woods. Wanted to remind the public that on October 27th at 7:00 in the morning, we are honored to have an honor flight that'll be departing from Castle to Washington, D.C. with World War II veterans and their escorts to go through the World War II memorial. 7:00 in the morning is when the wheels-up time is, it's not when they gather. So if anybody wishes to come and give the send-off that these men and possibly women richly deserve, you're going to need to be there 5:00, 5:30, somewhere around there, very, very early in the morning, because they're very adamant about taking off at 7:00. The one thing that is a caveat to all of this that I don't think people in the public are aware of is this comes at a cost, a big cost, and it's not going to be cheap. It's $120,000 to do this flight to and from, and we have a cost share part of it, 90 grand. So we're going to have to get together in the community, find corporate sponsors, whatever, so that we can pony up the $90,000 that they're talking about. So be aware of that. We've got some time, not much, but this is a very, very important thing, and it's something that these veterans from our area richly deserve. So just wanted to make sure people know about that, 27th of October, and wheels-up time at 7:00, and they encourage as many people as possible to come out and give them the send-off they deserve. Thank you.
Mr. Price, could I ask you a question? Do you know the number yet of how many people are going to be?
62.
62.
62 with the escorts, and, yeah, that's the best I have. I wish I had a point of contact for the, where the donations and money can be made to and all that stuff. If I can find that, I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly, we're just kind of going up and down.
Would you like me to sit down?
Thank you. Mr. Berkman?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Bill Berkman, 2100 Fruitland Avenue, Atwater. I would like to announce that, and happily announce, that First Church of God, which has been in the community for 98 years, also has operated Fruitland Christian Preschool for 50 years, and we're going to have a groundbreaking, groundbreaking ceremony September 7th, Sunday at 4:00 p.m. for a new preschool building and education unit, 6,500 square feet that was just approved by the city. And everybody is invited. We've celebrated, we're going to be celebrating 50 years, the groundbreaking, and one of our teachers has actually been with the school for 30 years, and we're going to be honoring her as well. So everybody from the city and the town is welcome to attend. Again, that's September 7th, 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon for groundbreaking celebration.
Judy Bowling, 137 Judy Drive, Atwater. I want to make a comment. I know it's not going to do a bit of good, however, I think it's doing a real disservice to this city to have one city council meeting a month. It's wrong. I shouldn't be able to speak on it because it's on, it's in the box?
It's in the agenda.
It's in the box.
It's on the agenda. You'll be able to.
Well, we know what that means. In the box means.
No.
Thanks.
You can still. Ms. Bowling? Mrs. Bowling, you stay, say you still can talk on it even though it's in the.
Well, I think it's a disservice. I think that instead of having one long meeting a month, it's just like whenever the stuff with the solar that went on. You know, instead of having it, you know, additional conversation in two weeks, now you got to wait a month. So something that could be taken care of in maybe four to six weeks is now going to take three months. Three months. It's not fair. And as for, as for coming here one time a month, how do you just cram everything into it? It's not fair. It's not right.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just for a moment, just so everybody's clear on the process, there is an agenda item that's comments for the public, which is for anything that is not on the agenda, that's when the members of the public can come up and talk about that. Then there's a second one, which is the consent calendar item. So even though they're in the consent calendar box, there's also going to be an opportunity for you to speak about consent calendar items when the consent calendar is called. So I just want to make sure everybody knows you do definitely have an opportunity to comment on consent calendar items as well.
Okay, any other person who wishes to come forward and speak comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to consent calendar.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilman Berkman?
I'd like to remove item six.
Item six. Any other items that the council persons wish to remove for separate action? Mr. Rivero, did you have a?
I was going to ask if there's anyone from New Life Community Church, Atwater Chamber of Commerce, or Atwater Police Activities League that wanted to come and speak about their activity. They could let us know. I'll pull that off so you can advertise your activity.
Pardon me, sir. That doesn't have to be pulled off because it isn't a voting item, so we will, we will have them come up when we finish the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other items you want polled? We have item six. Then I will introduce a motion to approve item number one, two, three, four, five. Seven, eight, nine. Now, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any of those items before we call for, call for the vote? When I asked to have them come before we do the vote? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine. Okay, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Joe Rivero. Okay, do I have a second?
We're just pulling one.
Just pulling item six. Yes, sir.
A second motion.
Second? Okay. Now I can ask the public if they would like to come forward and speak on any of those items that we have up for vote.
Hi, I'm Joe Hoffer. I'm the new president of the Atwater Chamber of Commerce. I live at 2033 Cannon Perstio Court in the City of Atwater. Number eight is the Atwater Chamber of Commerce as far as our fall festival. This will be our 38th year that we have done the, done the festival. It's going to be on October 11th and October 12th. We are hoping that as many people that can come out, can come out. We plan on having the food vendors, and again, We plan on having the food vendors and again, the, the arts and crafts and all of that. We are planning a pretty big car show this year on the 11th, and we're actually getting some help this year on, on trying to plan it. So, so it should be a pretty good event, so we're encouraging everybody to come out and enjoy themselves, it's definitely a family event. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffer, are you gonna by chance talk anything about the Police Activity Leagues while you're up, or is that, do we have a new person for that one?
That should be, I think, like Officer Nowinski? Or somebody else from Cal? We got a board director here that can...
Okay, why don't we have him do that before we ca- vote?
Congratulations, Joe.
All right, Joe.
I'm Dan Barnes, Recreation Supervisor here at the city of Atwater, also Vice President of the Police Activities League. On September 21st of, of next month, at 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, we're gonna have a concert in the park. It's Bands Against Bullying, it's gonna be youth bands, children, mostly singing in the park, we're gonna close down Ralston for a little bit and have them out there. It is free to attend, and the whole idea is to, children speaking about bullying and singing about it and things like that. So we'll also be out there with ATAC, with our Atwater Teen Advisory Council, hopefully selling waters and, and, and stuff, so we hope to have you guys out there from 2:00 to 6:00.
Thank you. With that, if there's no other comments, call for the question.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Berkman?
Yes.
Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we've pulled item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a, a couple of points of clarification. I didn't see in here when we're talking about the new commission, given that this is a, a new, gonna be a new commission, are, it is gonna be open to the public to apply as well as city commissioners on the rema- the existing commissions?
City manager?
That's, that's correct, we're staying, following the same procedures as we have in the past with selecting our commissioners. It's open to the public, city of Atwater, residents only, they apply, the council interviews, and then council makes their decision.
Okay, thank you. And then the one other thing is, I've been talking to several, several citizens, and there's been a large amount of support for this, but I just wanted to ask the Deputy City Attorney, we originally, this is set for seven commissioners. It's been the feeling, and I'm, I'm tending to agree with a lot of the citizens, they would like to see a little bigger commission in the area of nine, to give us a little bigger outlook, I mean, a little, little bigger input from the city, different, you know, different groups from the cities, and, and increase it a little bit to give us a little more in, input. And I was just wondering what the process would be, because we're kind of already into this, if we were to want to increase the size.
We would have to enact another ordinance, which would be amending this ordinance, so if this was passed this evening, it would go into effect in thirty days, and then if you wanted to later change it to have nine members instead of seven, you would go through the whole process of adopting another ordinance.
Copy, so if we, to try and do it now, we would have to start basically from scratch?
Exactly, that would be a substantive change, to change it from seven members to nine, and so we would have to start that process over again as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions as a ca... (cough) I'm supposed to before we enter the session? Okay, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, I had a couple of questions for the attorney, and then a little information I'd like to share, so you understand what I'm trying to ask. First, I thought the original motion to put this on was for, put it on the agenda as a discussion item, and then it came at it as an action item. And one thing I wanna make sure of is that the mistakes that were made in the Measure H aren't made on this one, so the questions I'm gonna ask is just to clarify, even though anyone can read it, I know that there's interpretation, on the Measure H, it was supposed to be no public official, but we had to change things to make that if a person served on another committee. So I wanna make sure that we don't s- s- vote on something that's gonna cause us to have to revisit and vote on. So the first one I wanted to ask, I know that somebody suggested that a person wouldn't have to live in the city limits, but the person who would be on the supercommittee, they would have to live in the city, city limits?
That is correct.
And would, uh, we be able to ask that the person is a voting, a registered voter in the city of Atwater?
They do have to be a registered voter, and that's pursuant to, I believe, it's in chapter 2.07, if I'm not mistaken.
All right. And then limit to serve on one committee, if a person was on this supercommittee, would they be able to serve on any other committee? Because basically, we're, we're cutting fifteen people's jobs and creating, what is a supercommittee? Five?
It would be seven, and...
Seven?
Let me correct one thing, it's gonna actually be in the new chapter 2.30, .030 that says members shall be qualified electors residing within the corporate limits of the city, so that's the proper reference. With respect to the second part of your question, which is if they're sitting on this commission, are they allowed to be on any other commissions? Is that your question?
Yes, yes.
I don't believe there are going to be any other commissions, that's the point of this.
I'm saying committees are commissions, and the reason I'm asking that is because we have a Measure H, and what we're doing is, is basically shrinking down fifteen people's job into seven. So for the population of twenty-eight thousand, I, I personally would not think it's fair that you're serving on Measure H and the supercommission. So is there any language in there now limiting the people to one commission or committee?
Not that I recall, but I'd have to look at it, let me look at it real quick. I don't see anything in this proposed ordinance that states that if you are sitting on this commission, and I don't wanna keep calling it a supercommission, I wanna make sure we have the municipal, oh goodness, what's it called? Atwater Community Development and Resources Commission, I don't see anything that says that if you're sitting on this commission, you cannot sit on any committees. However, I would have to go and look at the section on committees as well, just to cross-reference that, if anybody else up here knows off the top of their head, Gina or Frank, I don't see anything that limits the ability of them to sit on commissions and committees.
I don't believe there is.
Okay.
That's one thing I'd like to see, sec- uh, next thing, where are we at on notifying, when a person puts in an application, that they notify us of misdemeanor, convicted, convictions of misdemeanor and felonies?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
Uh, where are we at on an application form, 'cause Tom was here, and last time I talked to him about having an application form, have, having the city be notified of any convictions of misdemeanors or felonies?
Oh, so you wanna know where the application is?
I'm wondering where we're at in the process of having that on our no- our, our application.
As far as I know, an application has not been drafted yet, because there is no ordinance that's been adopted. Once you adopt the ordinance, then we would go ahead and create the application pursuant to your direction, but until the ordinance is adopted, we don't wanna do something that might not be fruitful for the city.
Okay, and then to regress just a second, is it possible for the city, if it agreed to limiting a person to one of these committees, just being able to sit on one, can we put that on application? I know you said that we can put it in, in a resolution later, but on the application, can that be one of the requirements that the city asks for?
If you want a limitation on the qualifications for an individual, it should be stated in the ordinance. So if that's a change that you want, you need to make a motion to amend this draft ordinance, we would need to start the process over again, meaning we would have to renotice it, start at the first reading in introduction level, and then go back to this process again. So if that's a substantive change that you'd like to make, you need to make a motion and see if the council agrees.
All right, thank you. And the next question would be, and I think you might be able to help us out on this one, on the cost of having it one a month, the savings was estimated at twenty-one thousand, and it's divided into three sections, city attorney, six thousand, video production, three thousand nine hundred, and staff time, eleven thousand one hundred. So can I have an explanation for the city attorney, and also video production, I'm pretty sure it's because you're cutting it from two meetings a month to one, but I'd like to have the city attorney explained, and the staff time explained, please?
Sure, from my perspective, for us to prepare for the meeting, to drive up here, we meet with the mayor and the city, the mayor and the city manager ahead of time, we answer questions from the other council members, we work with staff, so doing that twice a month isn't necessarily double the cost, but that was our estimate as to what it would save the city if we didn't come here twice a month.
But when it comes to agenda items, it's still gonna be the same cost, so basically you're saying it's six thousand dollars for the drive time and answer questions?
No, not necessarily, it would depend, every meeting is different, and as you know, your agendas are different, that's the estimate that we came up with, based on how much time we spend coming here, meeting ahead of time, answering questions, all of that, that was the estimate that we came up with.
'Cause to me, if you're gonna cut the attorney's fee when it comes to two meetings to one because of items, it means you're not doing due diligence to the items, and I know you can't predict what items are gonna be on the agenda, but if the cost has been X amount over a year and you cut it in half, if you're still gonna do items, I don't see that it doubling the cost, because the due diligence of the council and the due diligence of the attorney would still be the same cost.
Rest assured, we will always give sufficient diligence to every agenda item, and make sure that we are performing our services with the highest quality. That is the estimate that we came up with, based upon all of the costs that go in. That's, I mean, that's the best I can tell you, we've looked at it, and that's the estimate that we came up with.
Thank you. And then on staff time, eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Can I, can I get a breakdown of that?
City manager?
If you know you want to, this is your department, you wanna give them a breakdown?
Sure. When I did that, there, it was, it calculated to thirteen hours per month, it was a very quick estimate, and I just used an average of all the recording secretary salaries and the hours of the meetings, and that's how I came up with that dollar amount. So we would be eliminating the need for the recording secretary and the time for the parks and rec, the traffic commission, and one planning, and then I reduced the hours, because a planning commission could actually be longer, or not that, the new commission could actually have longer hours, and the same for the city council.
Aren't most of those people department heads?
All, this is all on hourly, just, just, this estimate is just the recording secretaries of which are hourly and not salary.
All right. Then I was gonna ask, 'cause we talked about how much overtime or how much time is being spent copying off these packets, and obviously, the packet's thick, but it's not that thick. I was gonna ask, what is our company policy, or our city's policy in having the agenda items turned in on a Monday before the council meeting? That would give the city clerk's office half of Monday, all of Tuesday, all of Wednesday, all of Thursday, to run these packets off, which is three and a half days. So if we have three and a half days to do these, the city clerk's office has three and a half days, I don't understand why people are staying overtime, and there's that much work being put in after hours. So why is this occurring?
Our cutoff date is usually Wednesday. When you have a council meeting every other month, we can't allow them to have two or three days to get in staff reports, especially when there's a lot of research done in the area of Scott McBride and some other areas. So our cutoff is Wednesday, all right? That's our cutoff. So it's all about dollars and cents. If, you know, we can sit up here and debate all we want on if we're saving any money, but you put me in charge to save, save money. I'm trying to cut costs as much as I can, whether it be two dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, it's all about saving money. And the analysis that were done in regards to the attorney fees and our staff time is, I think it's a little low. So I can't cut my staff short, we're, we're lacking in our staff, you already know that, Mr. Rivero, and I can't push them any more than I already do. So I can't limit them and tell them to get a staff report in in two days when I give them a seven to, you know, seven to nine days. So it's tough, it really is.
Okay, well, one of my major concerns too, is with this supercommittee, is getting rid of some of our, our planning commission, our traffic commission, and our parks and recreation. And one of the things that's upsetting to me, and I'll ask the, our city attorney, the traffic commission is basically in charge of handling our city streets and crosswalks, along with the, other issues. If a person is struck in an intersection or on a city sidewalk, or even worse, a person's killed in the city street or cross, crosswalks, a person or person's family can sue the city for damages, lost wages, pain, and suffering, and other, other, other issues?
Are you asking me if somebody can sue the city?
I'm asking, can somebody, the city, yes.
It would depend on a lot of different circumstances to whether the city has any exposure. You're at, you're, you had presented a hypothetical that's extremely vague, and it's hard to analyze any sort of case like that without knowing the circumstances.
Okay, well, let me give you a little bit of the circumstance.
Let me, excuse me, sir, let me ask you this now, are you saying, can, to, let me get straight here, are you asking if a commissioner can be sued?
I'm saying...
Because, sir, let me finish. Can a, are you asking if, if a commissioner can be sued, or a member of this committee can be sued, is that your question?
Uh, no, I'm asking, can the city of Atwater be sued if somebody's run over in a crosswalk or a sidewalk for all those damages I had mentioned prior?
Generally, the city can be sued by anybody for anything, it doesn't mean that the city is actually going to be found liable.
So what I was trying to say, in 2007, we had seven people hit inside a crosswalks. In 2002, we had another seven people. In 2003, there was three people, one of them faded, faded. 2004, we had eight people hit in crosswalks. In 2005, we had six people hit in crosswalks, a fatality on 9/24, and another fatality on 10/25, which averaged one person being killed every year for those three years. In 2006, it was six people. In 2007, it was two, and then in 2008, we lost another person. The city of Atwater, with the traffic commission, started putting in lit crosswalks and speed signs by our schools. They dropped to, 2009, there was only two, in 2004, there was four, in 2011, there was four accidents. In 2013, the report I had was two, and in 2014, the report I had was zero, and it was printed out on 8/19, so I don't know how far that report went. But on 2012, we had nine people hit in the crosswalks. And why am I asking this? It's because I think we need to give our traffic commissions more to do instead of less. There was a comment made that some of the, the traffic and committees only met for fifteen minutes. If you look at the traffic, traffic commission, the minutes I was able to find online, the traffic commission counseled just about as many meetings as they held. In 2013, there was four meetings counseled and seven meetings held. In 2014, there was, two of the first five meetings were counseled. And this is important, because in not one of these agendas items, does it talk about Winton Way and Fay? In 2009, there was two inside of that, that intersection. Winton Way and Fay has had an accident on 2010, 23, 9/7, 5/24, 9/11, and 12/29. And what I'm trying to say is, I wanna give our traffic commission more to do, I want them to have these things on their agenda. When it came, our staff told this city council, or most of the people who are on this board, they told our city council that you couldn't get a lit crosswalk, 'cause they came from Germany, and it took too long. The traffic commission, along with the council, went out and found that we could get them in Fairfield, California. The, the council was again told that it costs too much to put these in, they gave us estimates of forty to forty-five thousand dollars. We got them twenty-five thousand dollars from Fairfield. We were told that it costs too much to train the people to put these things in, the traffic The traffic commission and the council moved forward and found out that the company that sold them to us would train it for us. So these are the type of things that are important for the traffic commission, and I'm trying to explain, I don't want to see these commissions lose their power. I don't want to see them lose their times that they meet. There's important issues. Eventually, somebody's going to get killed in one of these crosswalks, especially you have Wenton, Way, and Fay five times in just a few years, six years. That's almost a person happening. I'd like to see the traffic commission take this head on and, and knock, knock Wenton, Way, and Fay out. Because over, as I looked over the meetings, I never once saw Wenton, Way, and Fay. The park and recreations have just as much responsibility. They're out there trying to find activities for our kids to do, to keep them busy, to keep them off the streets. They take their business, and one of the, I think the commissioner came here to the last meeting and explained how important they were. I know Caesar's out there. How important you feel your job is and how you want that specific title. Each meeting that you have is a specific title on Parks and Rec. It's a specific title for traffic, and it's a specific title for planning commission. And each one of them should be handled differently. And finally, this city council suspended our audit and finance, our public safety, and our public works. There's been a whole bunch of things that have fit through the cracks because of the suspension of these. One of the reasons that I made the motion and asked for the council and all five members' support is when we did the audit and finance committee, it was Gary Frago back then, came to the audit and finance committee and asked about an apartment complex that didn't have enough garbage dumpage for the people that was falling on the ground. The audit and finance committee before that meeting had never seen accounts payable and accounts receivable before that meeting. But because we asked for it, we actually saw it. That was before our city manager was on. It was up to two million dollars. The city had owed on, on accounts receivable. And with your help and others, other staff members, you were able to get, get that money caught up. But what I'm saying is, each one of these committees has a specific job. It's, it might seem minute, but it's not. It's very important to the people. It was two million dollars missing in the audit and finance on public safety. When it came to ordering the fire truck with the latter, it could have been done through public safety first. And why is that important? Because in our city council meeting, even our own city manager said that he wasn't involved in the procurement or the selection of the fire truck. That's something that fell through the cracks. But if we have these meetings, it's, won't fall through the cracks. On public works, there's, there's another situation, there's an item later on I'll, I'll speak about. But when it comes to employees' health, if we really care about our employees, and I understand where Mr. Petro's coming through and how much stress he's putting them under, and I agree with that. One thing I want to say is if one of the reasons that we're doing, cutting the city council meetings down to once a month, and it's our, our employees' health, then by God, we should be thinking about these employees' families. We shouldn't be taking it off in October, and November's already one. We should take that October and February and move it to July and August, right after we do the budget hearings, which is a huge strain on our staff, and I understand that. But we should have them in January, or, excuse me, in July, in August. This is when the peoples who have children, who are in kindergarten through high school, their kids are on vacation. This is when we should give them time off. And I think, Gina, we spoke earlier, that if people use their vacation time, it's better for the city than having to pay it, correct? So if we give a window of opportunity for our employees to take a vacation in July and August, and they take it, it not only helps us on our finances, but it helps for our, our employees' health. And in conclusion, I just think it's important for everybody in our community, each commission that focuses on one, either planning, traffic, or parks, and it's, if we don't do that, we eliminate the three commissions and these groups. It lessens the citizens' decision-making process. And that's what's the most important thing to me, is that we want all twenty-eight thousand people to have an opportunity, and the less we make the opportunity, the less we'll hear their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other comments from the council before I open up the discussion? Councilman Bergman?
I just had one more question on this commission. I know we're set up for one meeting a month. If we should, if a big item should come in that needs, requires immediate action, is it set up to where we can call an emergency meeting for this commission?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I just, I just want to thank the city manager for the time, the countless hours he puts in on this. And I know these are tough decisions, they're unpopular decisions. But in my mind, we've done everything within the box to try and get this city and keep this city in the black. We're projected to be in the red next fiscal year. It's time we think out of the box. Are these the best decisions? I don't know. But we've got to try them. If it doesn't work, it's easy to go back. But we've, we've got to try, try something to keep this city afloat. We can't go back to where we were in two thousand ten through, two thousand twelve. It's just not acceptable, acceptable to me, and I can't sit here and allow that. So we've got to move forward, we've got to try new things. Please be patient. If they don't work, I'll be the first one to say, you were right. It's time to go back. But we, we've got to think outside the box, and we've got to try anything we can to keep this city afloat. I love this city too much to let it go down where it was a few years ago. So having said that, I just, thank you.
Hey, if there's no more comments from the council, I'll open it up for the comments from the public in regards to this matter. Mr. Vineyard, go right ahead.
James Vineyard, two four zero one Canal Drive, Madam Mayor and the council. I just have one suggestion. If you go to one meeting a month, there's been a lot of controversy about amount of time of speaking allowed. It should be increased to five minutes. I'd like to offer an alternative to that, is actually give the three minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and then have an alternative three minutes at the end of the meeting that people can also come up and speak. That would actually give people six minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello. Adam Reed, fifteen twenty, Frithland Avenue. As far I know, Mr. Bergman talked about the availability to have a special meeting for, like, planning commission or something. I don't think that we should be limiting our planning commission meetings to once a month, even if we do have the provision to do special meetings or call for a special meeting. You say for a big item that we can call for one, I would have to say that a small item is something important to somebody also, the applicant. It may not be important to everybody, but to the applicant it is, and to hold them up, especially whenever we deal with businesses. I don't think that that's necessarily a good thing. So, and also with big business, too, thirty days to have to wait can determine if they come to our city, or they go to Livingston, or they go to Merced. And then also, with how close it is to there being two new members on the council, potentially a third, I think, I would think that it would be a better idea for the new council to have made this decision, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Hi, Wayne Wallace, sixteen fifty-three Van Terrace. Council Bergman, I, you're talking about extending and putting more people on a committee. I'm just going to speak from experience. I was Rotary Secretary for three years with a club of thirty people and later sixty. We strove to get a hundred percent attendance. We, in three years I was there, we never did it. The more people you have, more absence you're going to have. And the other question I had, I don't know who to aim it at, but do you have bylaws on this committee that says if you miss two meetings in a row without an excuse, you're replaced by the council or something like that? Because if you don't, your committee will all of a sudden be there with people with, just to get their names on it and nothing else. And that's something you should really consider. And I don't know, I just thought I'd throw that in because I've had experience with that.
Okay, the city attorney will answer that question.
There is currently a planning commissioners handbook. I don't know if it's just planning commissioners, but there's a commissioners handbook, and I believe that the absences are set out in there, although I don't have that off the top of my head. I'll also tell you that I'm hearing staff say three meetings is the maximum that they can miss. But I'll also tell you that one of the assignments that the city attorney's office has been given is to go through and make sure that that planning or that commissioners handbook is up to date and includes all of the provisions that the council would want to ensure that the commission runs smoothly and effectively. So there will be an opportunity to address any of those types of issues if they're not adequately addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Jim Price, thirty-four six, Village Woods. Are we speaking to both the super committee and to once a month council meetings? Is, is that how this is?
The attorney?
Okay.
Yes, both, sir.
Well, I, I can't add anything more to the super committee concept. I, I, all the arguments been made, and I just would echo them. I do agree with the city manager that saving any kind of money that you can within the city is absolutely paramount, that this is one of those things that's going to have to happen, no matter who's sitting where and all this. But I have some real reservations about the business of having one a month council meetings. It just seems to me, when you take a look at what a normal council meeting, you might run eight thirty, nine o'clock, you do that twice a month. If you do that once a month, then you're going to be running up against the clock at eleven, twelve o'clock possibly. How is the hours going to be saved in attorney's fees if you're doubling down on that? But moreover, we're not addressing the, the prime reason for, for having council meetings open to the public. It's so that the public can be at the public meetings and be on the record, address things. One of the other things that is got to be upfront is that if you have a developer, a business, whatever, that requires coming to the council for approval, if you come to the meeting and that meeting somehow shows that there is something inadequate within their application or, or something, and I point to the Casey land lease here recently, that came back, what, a couple times beyond that? Are you saying that we're going to have special meetings to cover those types of situations? If so, again, you are not, your cost savings are going to get shot. So if you need to have a, a special meeting, you're, you're defeating the whole purpose of a single meeting. But the idea, though, also of just coming once a month and having three minutes is a travesty. Five minutes is not beyond the realm of anybody's possibility. Five minutes is, is, is an absolute for having once a month meetings. And it's been said, we're going to put people to sleep? I guarantee you, if I've got five minutes, I don't put anybody to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lee, eleven ninety-nine Atwater Boulevard. You know, the bottom line is fiscal responsibility, and I think if anybody is talking about that, they have to realize that this is one step towards that, and it's something that has to be tried. We've already stated that we can have special meetings on both the council level and the super commission level if something comes up and it's important and has to be decided in a certain timeframe. Councilman Rivera, I'm glad you validated the super commission for me, because all of the things that you laid out regarding the traffic commission and all of the things that happened in Atwater happened prior to a super commission being formed. So obviously, something else might need to be tried. And as far as slipping through any cracks, I think the Conergy contract slipped through a crack. So maybe a super commission might have prevented that. The super commission is something that will enable people to come into this area and see all three commissions in action at one time, traffic, parks and rec, and planning. It gives all three previous commissions the ability to see how everything comes together. Some things have not been passed down to parks and rec. Certainly, some things have not been passed down to traffic. We see that around this town now. Those of us that have been here a long time have seen it around this town for thirty years. All commissions need to come together, and I think this will give the city of Atwater an opportunity for this to happen. It's not a permanent fix, but it's something that I think we need to try. The one council meeting a month, and Jim's right, whether it's five minutes or whether it's three minutes in the front or three minutes in the back, as Mr. Vineyard stated, which I think is a pretty good idea because it gives a lot of us sitting out there, Jim included, an opportunity to go through a meeting and then come back up at the end of that meeting and address something that we could not normally be able to address. But regardless, I think Frank has stated this, I believe it's four months that we're doing this, and then we're going back into two meetings. So I think it's something that we really need to try. We need to think out of the box, as Councilman Bergman said. It's very important for this city going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Raymond, five five four East Bellevue. First, Madam Mayor, council members, I would like to commend you for thinking outside of the box and trying something different to cut costs. However, I disagree with it. And like Councilman Bergman, I love my city, and I want to see it grow, and I want to see it prosper. And with the super commission, you have the potential for, or what I've been hearing, is we'll call a special meeting for big, big items on the agenda. Big is a subjective term, you know? If I'm next to somebody bigger, I'm small. So I think that has the potential to create a problem for a small business coming in who wants to do, you know, even little minor changes. To them, it's, it's the world because they need it to make their business grow. I think that's just something we need to take into consideration before we move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else out in the, the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close this and bring it back to the, to the council. And I'm going to ask, Councilman Rivera has already spoke on this matter. I'm going to ask, is there any other council persons, and Mr. Bergman, is there any other council persons who wish to speak before I recognize Mr. Jeff Rivera again? Okay, seeing none, and I'll go to Mr. Jeff Rivera.
I'm going to ask the attorney, is it possible to separate these two items so that we can vote on them individually? Because I know we lumped them together to talk about them, but we're going to vote on them separately?
Yes.
Because I know if we moved February and October to July and August, it would only mess up, basically, the schedule that we have set up for the one, once a month meetings anyway. Instead of it being in October and February, we move them to July and August. Because if, once a month meetings are scheduled right now for October, January, and February. Does it go any further? Goes March?
March, April.
Okay, so I'm asking that the October one and the February one are moved to July and August so that way, people who have family members can take vacation. I know it's thinking outside of the box, but since we're outside the box, let's shoot for the moon.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is, instead of having a meeting, twelve meetings spread over twelve months, you want those twelve meetings to be spread over ten months with two meetings held? Is that what you're trying to say?
I would like to see July and August have the single, single meetings a month.
Okay, and then you want all of the other?
I'm just asking for those two months to have it. I don't know what your plans are or how long you're planning on continuing this.
Okay, the way that it's set up right now is that there's going to be a meeting once a month. Are you talking for the commission, right?
Yes. No, for the city council.
Oh, the city council.
City council.
So the way that it's set up right now is that the city, this, the proposed ordinance is that the city council will meet once a month, every month.
Indefinitely?
No.
That's, I didn't think it was indefinite, that's why I'm trying to make a clarification.
Yes, okay, for the six months. Okay, until May. And so you want to take some of those meetings off?
What I'm trying to suggest, instead of having the one in the month on October- What I'm trying to suggest, instead of having the one in the month on October and in February, if we can move those one-a-months to July and August, when people would really probably enjoy having, if we're talking about our staff health, having vacation time in July and August or having less meetings so that they have more time at home or not overtime or whatever terminology we want to use. And that's why I was trying to separate the two, because I would like to make a motion that...
Okay, so the way that it's set up right now is in section 2.08.010 for the city council meetings, there will be one month starting, it would be in October, so October, November, December, January, February, March, April, there will be one meeting a month. After that, it would go back to two meetings a month. It's just a trial period for six months.
Okay, so I'm asking that if we're doing that, thinking outside the box, then move it to extend it, because I know that making this motion would cause October not to happen, so it would kick it down, kick it down two more meetings. We'd have to have a first reading and a second reading, so you'd sacrifice October. So if you're doing six months, November and December are already there. They're already scheduled for once a month. So if you're doing six months, so that way, we use July and August for the people.
So your motion is to amend the ordinance?
To bring it back.
To read, as you have said, and so we would bring it back for a first reading and introduction next month with the proposed schedule change that you've just articulated. That's your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Councilman Bergman?
I was corrected a couple of meetings ago when I made a motion prior to the chair, asking for the motion, and I was denied, so I just want to, and I'll give you your opportunity.
I'll pull my motion.
But my understanding is we were trying this for a specific period so we could realize what the actual cost savings is. By cutting these up, it's not going to be easiest to realize different factors of cost savings period. Now, I know the councilman says he wants mental health for the employees in July and August so they can take vacation. In our July and August meetings, several members up here were vacant, or gone because they were on vacation anyway, so I really don't see the relevance in that because they're taking, they're going when they want to anyway. So I really don't see the relevance in that. If you do want to do that, then let's make that a separate issue, but I truly don't see we're going to realize the savings unless we do this for a specific time period and not be cutting it up like you're stating.
So Councilman Jeff Rivera pulled his motion, so we can, and it appears that, Joe? Did you? Jeff?
I was going to answer Mr. Bergman. These people are going on vacation, so when they're gone, we're having to backfill their positions with somebody else, which is causing the workload. So that's all, the only thing I was trying to do, I don't agree with the once-a-month, but if we were going to do it, I'm just trying to do it so that our employees get the July and August period. That's all I was trying to do.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this item. Mr. Bergman, are you, you wish to make a motion on this item on the council meeting?
Oh, sure, I was going to push my button, but okay. I respect the councilman's opinion, but I don't think it's going to help us realize what we're doing, so I want to make a motion to approve the original verbiage in item six.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Mooneyham. Councilman Joe Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to put my buck ninety-five in on this conversation. Now, I heard from Mr. Rivera, and he talked about this council had suspended the audit finance, the public safety, the public works committees, which I thought was horrible at times, so it's members of this council, because it's not this whole council that did away with those, which I think eliminated the rights of so many citizens to come there to those three meetings, I think that were very important. The, I heard tonight, too, thinking outside the box. Well, you know, whenever something, somebody wants something, oh, suddenly there's this big, oh, this money issue. Now, I heard, what, eleven thousand dollars approximately in savings, but that's not considering as what was brought up, special meetings. So with a special meeting, the attorneys are going to have to come down again anyway because of the special meeting. So I don't see the total numbers. I think numbers can be played with, you can look at them one way or another. Okay? And for really thinking outside the box, you know, nickel and diming, and I consider eleven thousand dollars nickel and diming, I mean, there's opportunities to, and I brought this up to this council in the past, it's not to tax the people, but to look at cuts. And we need to look at our contracts. There's some contracts out there that have cost this city upwards of about four and a half million dollars over the last several years. And those are the things that we need to be focusing on, not taking away the people's rights to come and participate in local government. So when you're taking the government and saying, hey, you know what, we're going to just cram it all in, and let me tell you, when, I've seen people out there, too, they're here for the first part and then it goes on and on and on. I've been in meetings where it's gone till one o'clock in the morning. And where's the participation then? Where are the people, even some of the press leaves, so they don't hear everything that's going on when you have these super-long meetings. So what you're doing is you're taking the public out of the factor, not directly, but indirectly by doing this. So I don't like that. I mean, we don't have the commissions that we used to, like I said, audit and finance has stayed, it got brought back, public safety and public works, which you stop and look at our streets, people would come in and talk about things and their complaints, and that doesn't happen anymore. It's what we do when we try to go out there and talk to people, and I hear some things, oh, we have this problem, but we don't have that open committee anymore for people to come in, which is a shame. And, you know, people were elected to serve on this council, and I don't care what the excuse, oh, we're saving eleven thousand, if that's the truth, okay. If that's the actual numbers. But you're here to serve and put in your time. I know it's, I know sometimes it's hard, and I understand the employees have it rough here, and the employees everywhere. I mean, you stop and look at Pueblo employees, where are they going through? AT&amp;T employees. So a lot of people are having problems, but our employees, the ones that are here, still have jobs. And I know it's tough on you, but we should all be thankful, all of us, I'm thankful for my job. So, you know, we just have to pull up the bootstraps and make it. You know, I heard super committee, super committee, super committee. And it's funny, though, the same people that were saying super committee were the ones that were bringing this up before, that were saying, hey, it's okay now. I mean, this is something else the council has done, that before, you couldn't serve on two committees. Suddenly, after the major eight, now, suddenly, we're making exceptions, and now a person can serve on two. We have twenty-eight thousand people in this community, and a lot of people have applied, but you know what? We're reducing the numbers that can participate, which is horrendous. Now, I talked, I know, I heard that, oh, there's a great big out, well, I don't know the exact term, but there's a great big bunch of people that really want this. Well, I went out and I talked to some of the commissioners, I talked to a lot of people, and not a single person I talked to, but I'm not going to special interest. I went out there and talked to different people, and not any of them thought it was a good idea to go ahead and stick your public works, your traffic, and your planning altogether and reduce the number. For one thing, you have fewer individuals, fewer minds. How does that work, where you have fewer individuals dealing with more? You have lesser input from the community. Okay? So that's not really a big plus for this community. Another thing, people on the Parks and Rec. Okay, I talked to people, now, their interest isn't always in traffic. A lot of the people that are in the Parks and Rec, they're interested in their parks, their kids, and such. Some of the developers aren't interested so much in the Parks and Rec, but they're interested in the planning. So you're going to reduce the numbers for what reason? Now, for eleven thousand dollars, potential savings, I just think that we're taking the public's input and reducing it. And for whatever special interest or special reasons, I think it's wrong. So I didn't support this, I didn't support reducing the other committees. I think that the city needs to run as the city should run, no matter what the circumstances, let's make it run. And if we're really thinking outside the box, then let's put it on the agenda and see how we can cut and save potentially four or five hundred thousand dollars for contracts instead of nickel and diming and taking away the rights of the people to come to the meetings. So that's my input.
I would like to remind the council that when we came to them and asked to move the meeting time for the traffic commission, we were told, no, it was going to stay there at that time because that's when the public was used to it, knew that that's when the meeting time was, so...
Linda Dash, Atwater, just one quick question to Mr. and Mr. Rivera. You talk about...
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is a motion on the floor, and we have a second.
Okay, that's... The reopening to the public again?
You let him talk.
The city attorney said that I could recognize them because it's a part of the...
There was a motion, there was a second, the public hearing was closed. If you reopen it up for comment, you can make that decision. But otherwise, the public hearing has already been closed.
I'm sorry. Just a real quick question to the Rivera brothers.
Go through the chair, please.
To the council, excuse me, Madam Mayor and council. In answer to the Riveros who are talking about taking away from the twenty-eight thousand people, both of you sat on a two-man committee, solid waste and the Con Energy Committee, so there were only two men committees there, so that more or less was what you're talking about, taking away the rights of the twenty-eight thousand. Thank you.
Call for the question, and I want to ask the city attorney to please interpret, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. I'd like to have you interpret Mr. Bergman's motion as to whether it is for both items or separate, both the council and the super committee, or vote on one and then the other.
It was both.
It was both, okay. Okay, shall we call for the question?
Jeff Rivera?
No.
Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
You know, just to answer, I did sit on the committee, on groups to bring in what approximately six hundred thousand dollars for the one committee and over two hundred thousand plus, four points a million dollars. I just wanted to say, because she asked a question, I wanted to make sure she was answered.
You and I served on the same committee, and it was the, to help with the contract for the waste...
Right. I mean, I served on that with you and then I served on the one with him.
Okay, so...
So I'm just saying how much those committees brought into the city.
Okay, that's, we have, I call for the question, sir.
Absolutely not, no.
Thank you.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, been having a short recess?
[inaudible] 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 Call the meeting back to order. 7:34. Next item on our agenda is treasurer's report for the month of July 2014, Mr. Treasurer Heller. Item number 10.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Before you is the treasurer's report for July. Any question?
The city council, yes, Jeff Rivera, question?
Quick question on our water treatment plant, how are we on our bonds, are we on schedule to pay and is everything good to go?
October 1st, November.
And we're online and the money's in the bank, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any questions from the audience of Mr. Heller? See? Mr. Lee, you want to come forward?
Well, you want to know what we got today?
Yeah.
Major H., today we received a check for June, 129,800.
Okay, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report for July 2014.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mayor Portam Munnieham.
Second.
Second by Mayor, by Councilman Bergman, do we have any further discussion? Call for the question.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Munnieham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, city attorney reports, item number 11. Whoops, pardon me, sir.
Even though your meeting once a month, all the bills will be paid twice a month.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate that. Councilman Jeff Rivera?
There was one other issue Mr. Heller brought up at Audit and Finance.
Just a moment.
Mr. Heller, at Audit and Finance, you brought up the fact that because it'd be once a month, that there would be a lag time in your treasurer's report, I just wanted to-
It'll be six weeks behind.
I wanted to let the council know that that would be the issue, that there wasn't a problem, but because of the way it works out, it'll be six weeks behind.
Yeah, because the bank doesn't send it to us until after the 15th.
Thank you.
Item number 11. Go ahead, you're, consider, consider approval of the First Amendment to the power purchase agreement between CGY Atwater One Limited and the City of Atwater, city, Deputy City Attorney Hendrickson.
Henderson.
Henderson. Apologies, I knew I'd say it wrong.
We'll go back and forth on our names, it's totally fine with me.
Oh my goodness, my apologies, and I even practiced.
This is a minor amendment to clarify, add some clarifying language, it's not changing anything substantive in terms of the power purchase agreement, the whole purpose of this amendment is to clarify that if the city were to terminate this agreement early for any reason, it's going to pay the termination value just as it's already set forth in the agreement, and it's clarifying that the city would not then become the owner of these facilities if it terminates early, that's all that this does. So we recommend that the council move to approve this First Amendment to the power purchase agreement in a form approved by the city attorney's office and to authorize and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city.
Do we have any questions of the Deputy City Attorney, Councilman Jeff Rivera?
So I was going to clarify, one of the benefits to the City of Atwater to do this is then it doesn't, doesn't show that it's a financial responsibility to the city, so if we were to take out a loan or any type of bond, it helps us on interest, or is that not correct? That's not correct?
There's, no, there's nothing different, as far as I know, in terms of that being the purpose, the purpose of this is just to add clarifying language, because it was a little confusing the way that it was written before.
And Thomas suggesting that we vote yes on this?
Our office is yes.
And I have one other question, I was going to ask the city manager. On well 15, I talked to PG&E and I know Mr. Bergman came up at our last meeting with numbers from one of the wells, and it has to do with this contract, so Mr. Bergman said he read off statements from previous months, and when I went back and I asked for the CMT reports, between 7:14 and 7:13, there was the city requested a rate change, PG&E cannot just change their rates, it was requested from within the city, so I was going to ask you, were you the one that requested the rate change?
Absolutely not.
And would you mind finding out who did that?
Absolutely.
And the date goes between 7:14 and 7:13.
We're off the subject.
No, it has to do with the contract and I just wanted to make sure, because this is the power purchase agreement contract that we're talking about, right?
What's at issue right now is making a minor amendment to the power purchase agreement with Atwater, CGY Atwater One LLC, this doesn't have anything to do with rates that were charged by PG&E.
Right, sir, that's, okay.
I'll make a motion to the First Amendment to Power Purchase Agreement in a form approved by city attorney between CGY Atwater One LLC and the City of Atwater, and to authorize and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city.
Second.
Before we go any further, I want to ask the public if they wish to make a comment on this item. Seeing none, is there any further discussion, questions from the rest of the council? I'll call for the question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Munnieham?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, city manager report, Councilman Jeff Rivera.
I was going to ask the city attorney the question I had about the PG&E, can I move that on, can I bring it up during comments?
During your comments, you may.
Councilman then ask for it to be placed on our next agenda?
You may do that, yes.
Thank you.
City Manager Petro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, first of all, I'd like to introduce Andreas Witt and Eric Olson from Ray Morgan Company. You know, the terminology, thinking out of the box is, it's, it's, it's been spouted out most of the evening, well, again, we're thinking out of the box, this company has come into the city and done a document technology assessment of our city, most of our copy machines are all antiquated, like everything else that we have in this city, we're currently in the process of, including you, and we're in the process of kind of updating some of our, our systems that we have, and later on, just to save some money, in phase two, we'd like to go to paperless packets, so that's just part of what Ray Morgan Company is going to do for us, it's my recommendation that we approve, staff's recommendation for nine Canon multi-function printer copiers and five of the laser printers, but I would like Eric and Andreas to give us a quick, brief overview of your company, please.
Great, thank you very much, would like to just give you a little bit of background on the very comprehensive assessment we did in partnership with city staff, the, the task we were given as we partnered with the city was to find opportunities both to reduce costs related to the current document technologies in use in the city, as well as find ways to improve operational workflows, to make life on the employees of the city just a little bit better. As we did this assessment process and did the interviews with many city staff members, we found some very important factors, number one, that the current deployment of document technology in the city was not meeting the current needs of the city, nor did we see it meeting the future needs of the city. We found that the current service levels on the existing technology were inadequate, they created bottlenecks affecting the delivery of services to the citizens, as well as creating significant staff frustration. We also found that the current costs associated with the existing fleet were way too high based on the current market and were putting a drain on the city's limited resources. We found excess labor being spent preparing and producing city documents due to the inadequate capabilities of the existing solution, and we found that there is most definitely a future need to migrate the city to a paperless agenda system, it's going to be our recommendation that is part of a phase two approach to our proposal. The proposed solution before you tonight provides the following benefits for the City of Atwater, number one, it will effectively deploy the correct output devices based on the city's current needs, that includes adding additional support services for both fire departments, including the detectives housed within one of the fire departments, provides access to our organization's best-in-class service team, we've built our business since the mid-'50s on providing superior service to the companies that we do work for, work with many cities throughout the area, and we want to bring that to the City of Atwater. Reduces the costs, most importantly, associated with the city's current document output fleet by over $674 a month, or in excess of $40,000 over the term of this cooperative purchase agreement, and it provides an ongoing method to review and adjust the expenses associated with the document output fleet through a series of regularly scheduled quarterly business reviews between Ray Morgan Corporation and the City of Atwater. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? City council members, before I open it up for, Joe, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, where you state that the proposed solution will, associated with the city's document technology needs and excessively a reduction in cost of $674 per month, and where do you come up with those figures, what, where is the savings for $674?
Absolutely, that's based on the current expenses associated with the lease agreements and the service agreements currently in place on the existing document technology compared against the proposed solution. As, as well as the retirement of some expensive inkjet printers and migration of that work to much more economical and efficient laser printers.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen, before I open it up to the public? Is there anyone in the public who would like to come forward and ask these young men questions in regards to the lease of nine Canon-
Bill Barkman, 2100 Frootland, we operate three different copiers at our place of operation, what is, when you do a service contract, what is your color and your black and white expense?
Those expenses vary depending on the type of device that's in place, we have approximately four different models being proposed to put in the city, with a range of black and white from, if I am correct off the top of my head, 008 to 0125, and a color rate from 065 to 075 depending on the device.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Folling?
Judy Bowling, 137 Judy Drive, may I ask where your business is at?
Yes, we have locations in Modesto, Stockton, Visalia, those are the closest ones to here.
So this isn't local, okay, then the next question would be, when you get to so many copies, then the price changes and goes up?
No, it doesn't, it's, you're set on the pricing from the beginning of the contract to the end.
No matter how many copies we run?
Well, you're paying per page, so the more pages you run, the higher you pay, so the intention with document management, paperless, is to reduce that paper, so ultimately, we're going to reduce your overall expense by not printing as much or copying as much.
Okay, because I have seen it before where you print so many copies and then the price goes up to another level.
No, it doesn't.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, I'll bring it back to the DAS, and any further questions, Councilman Jeff Rivera?
In the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, the question was asked, so I'll go ahead and ask it out here so people know that on Station 42, there's a fire station and a detective station, and they'll both be sharing the same unit, so it won't be two, correct?
Correct, we'll place one unit there to serve both populations.
Both will share off the one.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, unless you have ever-
Right ahead.
Anyone else wanted to comment, but after that, I'd like to make a motion.
Go right ahead, please.
Motion to award a contract in a form approved by the city attorney for a cooperative lease of nine Canon multi-function printer copiers and five Microme laser printers inclusive service maintenance and Ray Morgan Company, for a five-year lease.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Jeff Rivera, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Bergman, any further discussion? Call for the question.
Munnieham?
I'm actually going to vote no on this simply because in the past, I voted no on a couple of items when we weren't presented actual numbers comparing our present situation to our future state, so I don't want to be hypocritical in that regard, so I'm going to vote no on this.
Jeff Rivera?
I trust that the city manager has gone through the numbers and procured it, so, Chief, you've done an excellent job in our town, so I'm going to vote yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you coming for both-
Thank you guys very, very much.
Audit and Finance and the council meeting, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is reports and presentations from staff.
Cooperative purchase and five-year lease purchase of one new demo vacon truck sewer cleaning unit.
Thank you. This is to, we have two sewer cleaning vehicles, one's 24 years old, the newest one's 14 years old, this is to replace the 24-year-old that, just in the recent couple of weeks I've been working on this, it's gone downhill even further, and the problem is, is if, if our other one goes down at any time, which it did, it had electrical problem, and we have a sewer backup, we have a major, major problem, we have to go to another city, see if we can borrow their vehicle. This is a, it's a pretty good deal, we got, it's a brand-new vehicle, it's a- It's a brand-new vehicle, it's a, it's a demo, they've taken around a demo that. It's, it has every, everything we need and more. You know, it's, it's a newer piece, it has the new upgraded equipment on it compared to our 14-year-old one. And then we went out and got a five-year lease on it.
Excuse me, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Counselman Berkman?
Thank you, um, thank you, Mayor. Brian, you said that the, the older machine we currently have is going downhill fast. Well, I, I mean, that doesn't mean a lot to me. What, do you have an average monthly maintenance we're putting into this, what it's costing us to keep it operational?
We just spent over $5,000 the last December to put a new motor in it. That motor is now such blown head gasket. Yeah, it has a lot of blow-by.
So it's reconditioned, I take it?
No, the only engine we could find for that vehicle was a used, it was just a used, used motor out of a truck up at a Stockton.
So it's currently out of service?
Right now, it's out of service, yes, the old one.
What's the estimated cost to get it running again?
I have to take it back to shop, see if they can put a head gasket in it, they got to put rings in it, so we're probably looking at another five grand.
What about the 14-year-old truck?
14-year-old, we just had small issues with it. We had a starter go out on it on, for the rear motor. It's, it's 14 years old, it's because it hasn't, we haven't spent a lot of money on it for maintenance, but it's getting to the point where we got to put a little bit of money into it to, to get it back up to good operations.
Okay, thank you.
You, you can, we interrupted you, Mr. Shaw.
Oh, that's all right. But, uh, we got this five-year lease, and it's the same, through the same leasing company, we got the fire truck and the police cars through. They gave us a really good interest rate.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Shaw before we open it up to the public? Counselman Jeff Rivera?
Just double-checking the fiscal impact, this is coming out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with any, if we don't have any further questions, I'll open it up to the public and ask them if there's anyone who'd like to come forward and ask questions on this matter. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and is there any further questions? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase, or the lease of the, ordering of the contract for cooperative purchase of one new demo vac-con sewer cleanup unit in the amount of $365,559.48 for Municipal Maintenance Equipment Company of Sacramento. That's my motion. Mayor Portem, Mooneyham?
Sorry, Mayor, quick question for the city manager. Frank, no possibilities of grants for anything of this nature?
You know what, Mayor Portem, I think we looked into that and nothing as of yet.
Do you have a second?
A second motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, and we have Counselman Berkman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, this is 100% funded by the sewer fund?
Yes.
100%?
Yes.
Counselman Jeff Rivera?
What was the cost estimate to repair the, the old system we had?
I, I'm, I'm looking, it's around $5,000 probably to pull that motor out and have to rebuild it.
And then there, pardon me, but there's no guarantee after you pull it out that you already halfway did it and then it went out, or what?
Well, the, the biggest problem is, is being 24 years old, the, you know, it's, it's a vac truck, so the vac, the, the fan that creates the vacuum is wearing out. The rear motor, it's, it's wearing out. They're gas motors. Going with this new one, we're going with the, the, it's green, where it's part of the percentage that we have to go green for the city. And the, the old one, if you can see in there, the old one is only a five-yard waste tank on the back. The new one's a 12-yard. The old one holds, I think, 700 gallons of water, new one holds 1,400, to where the guys get out there and they can do more work without having to go and dump or fill up with water, so to be, they'll get more, more work done, more production.
I would think.
2.4%.
2.4%.
I would think also that we're going to come into some ocean matters here with this truck because of the safety of the person operating it versus the new one, where it has more safety features with it, and plus, I don't see how the air quality people have allowed this thing to keep on trucking, because.
Yes, well, it, it's gas, so they don't, they're not stringent on gas, they are on diesel.
Okay, thank you.
But the new, the new one, you can, you can run the rotor and everything with the front engine off, where you don't have to run the front engine, it's just the rear engine, towards the old one, you have to have both of them running to have hydraulics and to have the water pressure.
There's no, okay, I'll call for the question. Thank you. Joe Rivera?
At this time, no.
Jeff Rivera?
I have to say, Brian, I know you do an excellent job in the streets, and personally, I would rather see exactly how much it would be to fix the old one we have. The City of Atwater's getting basically $750,000 a year put back into the water, the sewer, because of the payments back from the water and the sanitation funds. And I, I would rather see citizens not have an increase on their yearly bill on the sewer, and I, I'd like to save up every dollar I can, so I'd prefer to look into seeing what we can do to save on, on our sewer.
This isn't going to raise sewer rates at all?
No, it's taking out $77,217.63 every year. So I would rather check in to see if we can put more money into the, the old model we have and save the city money. So I'll vote no.
Mooneyham?
We have funds in this, within this enterprise fund exactly for this kind of capital expenditure, yes.
Berkman?
I, too, would like to see some actual numbers before, I, I don't want to see this go away, but I would like to see some actual numbers before I approve it, so I'm going to vote no.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion fails. Counselman Joe Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Followed by Counselman Berkman?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm for supporting, for supporting this issue, but to take a look at some other possibilities. I mean, if it's only going to be 5,000 versus 77,000 years for years, that could be a potential early savings, but also it gives us time to look at grants, because I know, I mean, a lot of the vehicles in the past were paid for a large percentage through grants. I know you said that nothing has been, come up currently, but if we start looking out there, maybe we can look places we haven't looked, or, or maybe something will come up, because a, a large percentage of the vehicles, and I think the, the vac trucks themselves were purchased under a grant in the past, at least one of them. So, to, and I know, hey, there's money there now. There's money there now, and let's spend it, but that's not what you should be doing. Just because it's there, and, and people's rates were raised, let's not start spending it to the limit again. Let's start taking a look at how we're going to save money. So if, if it only costs us 5,000 now, that's a, a large savings in the future. If we end up having to purchase one, okay, after we take a look and extending the time, I'd like to at least take a look at grants, because a, a lot of vehicles in the city have been purchased through grants, which saves the citizens, even though the money's there, it saves the citizens in the long run quite a bit.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at grants, we haven't, we haven't gone to find any.
You haven't found anything for this.
But, I mean, to, to get back to fixing the old truck, the problem is, is everything is breaking down on it, everything. And we haven't, we haven't been able to even get out and rot all the sewer lines like we're supposed to, to try to keep from getting backups, because we only have the one truck, and we use it both for water and sewer. If we have a water break, we have to use it to, to suck up the holes. I mean, we could try to fix that, but it's just, it's going to be just a money pit. It's, you know, it's 24 years old, and it's, it's, it's had its life, it's, it's wore out.
Thank you. I think that one thing we need to think of as a council is that we are a service agency, and we are to provide services for our, our citizens. And one of the number-one services that we provide is sewer, and keeping the sewers correct, and keeping them following the state standards and the state requirements. And when you only have one vehicle and it's doing both sides, I think we're doing our citizens a disservice by not providing the sewer service that they're supposed to be receiving. Counselman Berkman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you just heard two, two council members say that we're not opposed to this. We just want to see more figures on what you've put into that. Brian, if you could go back a year and see what we've been putting in on this, so we know, so we have true numbers in front of us, so we know what it's costing, what we're putting into this, so, so we have a little more to evaluate. Right now, I mean, going downhill quick really doesn't give us any, any true idea of what, what this thing is costing us. So at the same time, I would like to ask that this be, Brian be given an opportunity to get these numbers, and I would like to see it brought back with true numbers, so we really have something to evaluate, because I truly don't think we have enough to evaluate tonight.
City Attorney, can we bring it back due to the fact that, what's the ruling on, since it went down in defeat, who can bring it back to the council? Does it have to be a voting member of the, a member who voted yea, yes, or a vote, a member who voted no? I always get this.
It's the winning side, for lack of a better clarif, lack of a better characterization.
That's a good definition, thank you. Okay, it's the winning side.
Mr. Berkman is, is funny.
Okay, Mr. Berkman could bring that, he has the correctness to be able to bring that one back, okay? Thank you. And Counselman Jeff Rivera?
I didn't see it on here, but what is the lease purchase? When you, at the end of five years, can you purchase it? I didn't see.
At the end of five years, we own it.
So it's yours for a dollar, or?
No, at the end of five years, it's, it's paid off, it's, it's yours, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Berkman, I'll entertain a motion from you if you wish to move to bring this one back to September 8th.
If, if I may ask, Brian, first, does that give you enough time to get your numbers together and bring them back to us?
Oh, yeah, that's, no, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, then, yes, I would like to make that motion that this be brought back to the first meeting in September.
First meeting in September?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Joe Rivera. Any further discussion? Paul for the question. Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Berkman?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Appreciate your efforts. Okay, item number 14.
City of Atwater mosquito abatement representative.
Okay, this one is a, the City of Atwater mosquito abatement representative, this is one that we have up for us, because our representative was appointed by the previous city mayor, and that was Mayor Rudy Trevino, and he appointed Mr. Bolch for, I think it was in 2002, did we decide that was probably it, 2004? And so Mr. Bolch has served as our representative to the, on the mosquito board for the last 12 years. And so then, we, we didn't really realize, anyway, so now they've asked us to, and then we found that Mr. Bolch was not residing within the city limits of the City of Atwater, so now we have brought, they've asked us, the city council, and the, and the mayor, to go about to develop some procedures for the appointment of, the filling the City of Atwater representative on the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District Board, and to define the terms of the office, whether it's two years or four years. The key thing in this one is that the person must be a resident of, live within the city limits of the City of Atwater. City, Deputy City Attorney, do you want to go ahead and explain the law relating to this, please?
Sure. Health and Safety Code, Section 2021 et sec, provide the authority by which a city can appoint a person to serve on the board of a district within the county in which the city is located. What's relevant here is exactly what you said, the city council, actually, it's the mayor, according to Atwater Municipal Code, Section 2.08.270, special committees shall be appointed by the presiding officer, which is the mayor. So the mayor's the one who appoints these people. There is no other, there are no other sections in the municipal code that discuss committee appointments, qualifications, requirements, or the process by which members are appointed. It just says that the member is appointed by the mayor. And Health and Safety Code, Section 2022, says each person who is appointed must be a voter and a resident of the city, and they have to have experience, training, and education in the field that will assist in the governance of the district. So you really don't have to have any additional procedures in the city if you don't want to, other than that you need to decide whether or not the term of office is going to be for two years or four years. So staff can be given as simple direction as you, as saying that you're going to select a two-year or a four-year appointment and leave it at that, or if you want to come up with more elaborate procedures for the selection process, you can do that as well. It's kind of at the pleasure of the council.
Counselman Joe Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for the city attorney. When you say appointed by the mayor, it's appointed by the mayor and approved by the council?
That's not what your code says. Your code just says it is, that the person is appointed by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer is defined as the mayor.
Yeah, because I know for a fact, in the past, the, I know for past practice, that's what, what took place, the mayor, Rudy Trevino, appointed, the council approved the appointment. In fact, I think in a recent one, the more recent one, the council denied it, and was to be brought back, but, it was, somebody's, but, but that's what the past practice was, and so the ordinance, for some reason, city attorneys at the time were continuing this process.
Yeah, you know, I looked at it online today, just to verify, because the same question came up earlier today, and online, unless your code has not been updated online, that's what it said. So if you want to change that, if you want to clarify, I understand past practice was done differently, if you'd like it to be changed, that's absolutely fine.
That's, that's, I think that all of our commissions, everything, that's the way it's worked, so the mayor appoints and the council approves for committees, commissions, and everything, so I'd like to see it continue that way, at least from the past practices that we've had. So I'd like to see that change. And I also like to see that, that the appointees actually show up and talk to the council, because if they're going to be representing the City of Atwater and they don't show up, you know, nobody can ask them questions. And I, I know there was, just recently, there was, I was out talking to some people, and this was in the evening, and, and the one fellow commented, and he says, well, that elderly lady over there, she just got sprayed. So he was curious about the times that they spray, when people are out, and I know I've seen myself where they sprayed, which, I mean, I specialize in etymology, and why they were spraying the streets rather than in other areas, but I saw him with one of the dusters come right over to a hamburger place, and there were people were eating outside when they sprayed, and this was fairly even around early dinnertime. So I, I'd just like to know some of the practices that are going on for the residents, so, you know, and it would be nice to have someone here that's representing the City of Atwater come to our meetings and make a report like our, you know, our other representatives do.
Yeah, I'm wondering what's going on, because it was just two years ago, and this is not putting down Mr. Bolch, because Mr. Bolch wasn't appointed by the City of Atwater, the City of Atwater did this, but two years ago, when his reappointment was brought back up, why did the council vote on it if basically we have no say-so? And two years ago, we voted after staff said that all they had to be is living in And two years ago, we voted, uh, after staff said that all they had to be is living inside the mos- mosquito abatement district. Well, that wasn't even true. And was it November or December, we went to vote on it? We voted four to one not to put this person back on. The reason I voted no was because a citizen had kept telling me that that's not what the rule says. The rule says that you have to live in the City of Attwater and be a, a resident inside the mos- mosquito abatement district. So I think we caused a huge problem for the mosquito bait, abatement district, 'cause if they had an illegal person voting on their, their board, I think they have to go back through and check to see if that person was a varying vote, if it was three to two and his was a yes or no, they have to go back through each one of those items and, and clerk.
Let me answer that question for you, please, because we asked the same question of the executive director, Mr. Edman, and Mr. Edman said that it did not, uh, he checked with his council and the voting record of Mr. Bolch, that, so he said that there was no effect by that. So that was the, the way that he answered that question. And so, yeah, we, uh, and we, we were not, just to be very honest with you, we were not notified that we were supposed to appoint, uh, this person. So.
Well, actually.
We were notified, sir.
You cut into me, ma'am. I was talking and asking questions, you just cut in.
Well, let me finish. So that, uh, so then we asked, so we just, we talked about the fact that having a person come up to town at the same time as a resident, the other committee members, and that's kind of what we decided to do. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Jeff Rivera, to the.
In December, we voted four to one not to have that person placed back on. My issue was that that person didn't represent the district or what the rules were, and that's what my issue was. And I asked to have it placed back on January twenty-seventh, which it did not. And this is just horrible when a, when a person, a council member has an issue with something, it's asked to be put back on, and it, it just gets shoved down the road. In fact, one of the ma- reasons it got brought back up is when we had a suggestion about allowing people to be on our, our supercommittee, or lack of better words, whatever it's called, but the supercommittee would be people that live outside the City of Attwater. And that person heard that and called me up immediately and said, what the heck are you doing about the mosquito abatement? And I said, I have to go back, I had to go all the way back and find out that this thing got kicked underneath the rug all the way back in January twenty-seventh. And I think that's horrible that, A, we haven't had a representative on there representing us, and B, we could've caused liability to a, a company.
Okay, so here we are today, and what's in front of the council is how to move forward. So let's come up with some procedures here to move forward. The Health and Safety Code provides that the city council is the one that appoints a member to sit on this board. Your code provides that the mayor essentially appoints the person. So one of the things we should do is clarify, let's be consistent with the, the Health and Safety Code, I would believe. The second thing that I would suggest that you do is decide whether or not you want to actually have the interview process, as was, um, proposed here tonight, the same as you do with other commissions, or if you wanna go about a different process. And then the third thing you need to do, as far as staff is concerned, is come up with the term limit of two years or four years. So those are the three things that I, um, have come up with. Is there anything else, Gina, that you think needs to be covered? And this has to be done before January. I'm looking for direction tonight, so we can come back with a, um, proposal to, for voting next meeting? City manager, do you have anything else that you think we haven't covered?
No.
Okay.
Don't we have to have this person appointed by December fifth? First Monday of January. Uh, to Councilman Jeff Rivera, followed by Councilman Joe Rivera?
There's three things I'd like to see. One of them is it's changed that the council votes on the person and the mayor moves forward with what the council, all five members, if that's possible. Second thing is, is that we're reducing our committees, uh, down to a supercommittee. So that means some members aren't gonna be, uh, put onto a committee. So I suggest the person with the longest amount of time serving on any one of the committees is, is, uh, put in this position. So that way, they're losing a position at representing the city somewhere else, we turn around and then put them to represent the city on the mosquito abatement district.
I just would like to give direction to, is the points that the city attorney brought up, uh, as well as having the mayor appoint with the, uh, council approval, as we do in the other committees, and that's what I'd like to see.
If I could respond, Mayor, to one of the things that Councilmember Jeff Rivera said, uh, with respect to selecting the person, um, sort of by default based on their, uh...
Longevity.
Longevity, thank you. Um, long meeting, sorry, losing my words here. Um, one of the things that you need to keep in mind is that the voter, the person has to not only be a voter and a resident, but as I was a voter in the city. But the person also has to have experienced training and education in the field that will assist in the governance of the district, and that is something that's required by the Health and Safety Code. So I'm not sure that, um, placing somebody on, in this position based purely on longevity of another commission will, um, satisfy that requirement. So, um, what I would suggest, if I could get direction, let's do these things one at a time, okay? So we can make sure that we're all on the same page. I think I'm hearing multiple people say that you want the council to appoint the, um, representative as is set forth in the Health and Safety Code. Is that right?
I thought it was the mayor did the appointment and the council did the, uh, approved of it, like we do with our other commissions.
That is what, what your current code says is just that the mayor appoints, that's it. What the Health and Safety Code says is that the city council appoints. So you need to, as a, as a council here, decide on the process by which the city council will make the appointment, whether it's mayor selects and council ratifies, or council selects, um, based on majority vote.
Well, since I was giving you direction, let me just say that the way we do it with our others, uh, based on the, the council selects, instead of just mayor and appoints and then the council ratifies, to go the way that we do with all the others.
Which mayor appoints? I mean, did, did the council appoint?
Council appoints.
So can we get a consensus on that?
What about the rest of the people?
Let's do them one at a time.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, then.
See what they.
No, I, I agree, I agree with that.
Council, okay?
Great. The second thing is, um...
Yeah, I, I had a question, too, when you were talking about their experience and training. So we're gonna be looking for somebody with, like, an etymology degree or chemical, something in chemistry? I mean, what, what kinda qualifications does say? I, I'd just like to have that clarified, so.
Just says that the person has to have experienced training and education in fields that would assist in the governance of the district. So I don't think that somebody actually has to have a degree, it just, the person has to be experienced enough so that they're going to actually, um, help in the governance. We don't want somebody that doesn't even know what goes on in there. So can we agree that the selection process will, um, involve ensuring that the person complies with the Health and Safety Code mandate? Okay, and then the term, do you want the term to be a two-year term or a four-year term?
Personally, I think most of our other commissions, uh, are four, so, uh, why not keep it the same?
Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Yes, I was gonna ask you, is there any way a city clerk could go back and find out in two thousand and four what, what qualifications that the council was looking for at that time, that the current representative had? So we have a baseline of what the city was looking for and what they chose from last time?
Well, and according to the letter that we have in our agenda, it was January of two thousand that Mr. Bolch, I think it is, was originally appointed. So if, you know, if that's your question for her, that's fine, but...
Yeah, that's, I was looking for what the qualifications, or what qualified him back then, so that way, when we're looking for one now, we know what the qualifications in the past were.
Do we have a consensus on a four-year term? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, great. I don't think there's anything else that we need in order to come forward with a, um, resolution of policy, unless there's anything else you guys wanna add.
Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Thank you. I just, I just am not sure of the relevance of what the qualifications were in two thousand and two. Every year, uh, laws change, things are getting stricter, environmental codes are getting stricter. So things that, that may have been necessary back then are not necessarily now. So I don't know the relevance of two thousand and four would really make a difference in what, what we're needing now. I would think the executive director of the mosquito abatement could give us the recommendations of what would be ideal for somebody sitting on that council would, in my mind, would be something we, you know, be better off to look for.
I'm, I'm just looking.
Councilman Joe Rivera?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mr. Bergman, if, uh, the director would probably have some, uh, good baseline, uh, so, for some information that we can put in the packet and say, well, what's your, uh, these, we're looking for these types of qualifications, uh, our experiences that'll help you, just so we, uh, or the pre, uh, future councils will know what to look for from individuals, so, uh, so they, they're just not shooting blind, so it gives us something to go by.
I think the mayor at that time felt that the, Mr. Bolch, uh, Mayor Trevino felt that Mr. Bolch was qualified to serve on the, uh, mosquito abatement committee. So it was due to the fact that he had that authority, he, uh, appointed the man. Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I would just, I would like the information myself, you guys don't have to have it, but I'm asking for myself. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see what choices were made in the past, and I'd also like to see, uh, how, uh, Mr. Edman and what his recommendations are also, so I can take the past and the future and make the best decision. Thank you.
Councilman Joe Rivera?
Yeah, and, and just to add to the history, where you said Mr. Trevino appointed in the five, recall correctly, back in two thousand, there was, uh, it was a three to two vote on the appointment, uh, where, uh, Mr. Trevino and the council approved, I think on a three to two. I, I might be incorrect, but I believe that was the time, and, and, yeah, and, and they replaced Mr. Cardoza, I think, who was on there prior to that.
We have a motion, uh, we have a motion, uh...
We don't need a motion, I just need a direction, and I think staff's provided directions sufficient to return a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim Price, three to four, six, seven, Village Woods. I, I, this goes back to two thousand, when this original appointment and, and was approved by a three-two vote, is the council correct?
I believe so.
So we've gone fourteen years with the same person on there? Is that correct? Okay, so let me see if I can get this timeline correct. In November twelfth, you took a vote four to, uh, four to one not to reappoint this gentleman. Ninth of December, you come back and it, it got pulled from the agenda. Twenty-seventh of January, it was supposed to, uh, be taken up again, but wasn't. There was a letter who, which I have been privy to see, uh, in the council packet in the, in, in the back, that comes from the mosquito abatement board that says, this gentleman's, uh, term was going to terminate on December thirty-first. So from December thirty-first or January first to today, this person has been serving, and it hasn't been brought before the council for any kind of, uh, discussion or, or anything else. And this, in, when, when did the appointment take place? There's no definition of when that took place. So, this, this, this is really a confusing thing, but it's, it's really smacks of, what did you take a four to one vote for on November twelfth and reag- re-agendize it for the ninth of December? And that letter says he terminated on the thirty-first of, of December. This, this is, this is incredible, and I surely hope that whatever you come to decide here, that there will be council approval, it, it'll be scrutinized, it'll, and it'll be voted on by the council from this point forward, with, without all this confusion, and, and especially if these requirements for a city, uh, resident, uh, were in place in two thousand and, until two thousand and fourteen, and that's been overlooked, that's shameful from the city. I'm sorry, thank you.
So we have, we have a correction, you do not have to vote on this. You have a direction and you'll bring it back to the next, uh, meeting then? Is that what the, the?
That's correct. We'll bring it back to the next meeting, we'll bring back a resolution with a policy so that hopefully we can avoid, um, some of the things that have happened in the past, and we'll move forward in a better light. That's what we do here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, having a fifteen-gloss home centennial celebration. This is on the twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen, please come if you can. There's a barbecue, as well as a, uh, honoring of the gloss home, that's hundred years. And, uh, so please come, Kathy Jensen, Greg Ozak, uh, Brian, um, McDaniel, they're all part of the, so if you'd like to contact them, or Mrs. Johnson, they're all people that you can contact to get tickets. It should be a great event, and so we'd like to see you all starting at six o'clock on the twenty-sixth. Um, we go to, uh, we'll start with Councilman Berg, no, I'm sorry. We will start with comments from the, the staff, I mean, try the councilmen, and we'll start with Mayor Portem.
I have none this evening, ma'am, please.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'd like to do is, um, on our next, if we need to bring it to our next council meeting, a little cleanup. In the past, our Audit and Finance Committee meeting was always aft, uh, prior to the second meeting of the month, the fourth Monday, so I don't know if we need cleanup, uh, language to readjust that to the second Monday of every month? So if we can bring that forward, just so we can make it official and that it, it, it is, precedes our, uh, council meeting, yeah. And that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, temporarily until, uh, the meetings, yes, correct.
Till we get it.
Till April thirtieth.
Yeah, till April thirtieth. Okay. We'll move on down to, uh, uh, Councilman Joe Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to begin by offering my prayers to those that were affected by the recent earthquake. I also had a question for, uh, our city manager. In emergency situations, being California, if we do have earthquakes that are even a higher magnitude, I know that sometimes that they request assistance, uh, I know our fire department goes up and, and helps with other fires in the forests and stuff. Do we have any kind of policy that if someone's requiring it, that we send like an, an officer, a couple of officers, or, or even fire, uh, for a major catastrophe such as?
We have mutual aid agreements. If they request, we send as many as we can.
I just, I just wanna make sure we have something in place in case there's something even, uh, even worse that we can offer help. And I, I have one more, one more comment, too. Well, it's actually for the city manager. I have a group of joggers that jog every morning, and they were, uh, saying that our water, uh, that some of the watering, that they said, there's a lot of water in some of the gutters in the morning. I know it's not in my neighborhood, because everybody seems to be really observing it, but they said in some of the areas that they go to, uh, that there's a lot of water and what's our...
Give you any ideas of what the areas they were concerned about?
You know, I, I, that's one of the things, I didn't ask them their specific area, and I'll go back and, let me contact them, that's all. Oh, and that, one more thing, they wanted to know what, what you did if, for that, could you just explain what, if there's a problem, what their policy is, so if they, they would know, because, uh, apparently, they were talking about coming here tonight, but they didn't make it.
Yeah, we, our water division goes out almost every morning and hands out, uh, red tags. After three o'clock, when the water division goes home, our code enforcement, uh, who's been off on an injury for the last week, so takes care of all the water abuse with red tags and citations as needed.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Yes, uh, after looking up the incident report, I was gonna ask the chief if there's any way on our next, uh, council meeting that we can put a lit crosswalk. And I talked to Mr. Zizoni, and he said there was funding that wouldn't come out of the general fund, but I believe it was gas tax and another, another fund for street safety to put in a lit crosswalk. It went in phase, since we've had five accidents, less than seven years there. Check to see if it's possible, if we can do that. Find the funding and then check with, uh, community development. Also, I'd like to see in our next meeting, the sewer fund is being replenished at seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Six-hundred-and-eight-thousand of it is coming from sanitation, and a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand of it is coming from the water enterprise. So I'd like to see a report with that money coming in. I know that every year, there's a cost of living on the sewer, and I believe that's gonna either match it or... going to either match it, or, or be even more than what's the cost of living. So if we can have a report exactly how much the COLA is, and how much is coming into the sewer fund, so that way we can bypass a COLA increase. If the money's coming in, instead of being a COLA, it would be repayment of the water and enterprise, because right now, they currently owe close to $6 million, I think it's five and a half million to those two funds.
Basically, you want a report in regards to what the sewer fund has extended to other funds? We've already given you interloans.
It's, the loan's coming back.
Correct.
Equal about $750,000.
Correct.
And it's scheduled to do a COLA next year, and I believe that $750,000 is larger than what the COLA is, so if it is, why are we charging a COLA?
Well, if you get, isn't that part of our bond, paying back the bonds that we have to charge the COLA?
Part of your, part of your bond was not loaning out 5.5 million, so if it's coming in, that wasn't part of the bond.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Yeah, I think, okay. Okay.
And that would be all, thank you.
Mr. Jeff Rivera, on the Fay and Winton Way, we also want to put up those signs, right? Not just the lighted crosswalk.
Right.
You want the signs also.
Yes, ma'am, because that way, you get more vision from the driver that's on the ground and up.
So, Mr. Jeff Rivera, while we're doing that, let us think about Grove, because we have, at Winton Way, we have the lighted crosswalk, but we don't have the signs.
Yeah, we could look at that also.
Yes, please, because we really need to, to look at that. That happens to be a school crossing, and that, we need to, to look at that one.
Your most, your street with the most accidents is Bellevue, with 24 accident, 24 hit pedestrians. Second would be Winton Way.
Bellevue, what, sir?
Bellevue Street, had 24...
Oh, yeah.
Reported accidents of pedestrians. Winton Way had 13 pedestrian accidents. First, Third, Fifth, and Seventh combined for 13, and Juniper, Fur, and Elm all had five.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the city manager, Eric Lee, and Mr., Mr. Akers, for going out with a trailer that was loaned to us by Mr. Krotik to pick up 150 shopping carts, and I hate to tell you this, but we missed about four, because they're, they're like topsy, they grew up. The minute you guys had them all on the trailer, four more grew next to Bellevue. But I do want to thank the three of you for doing that. Job well done.
Two mattresses?
Oh, and two mattresses, yes, two mattresses, thank you.
I appreciate those, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Appreciate those text messages.
That's what I was, he told me to do that. Okay, September 11th, again, please remember, we have the Patriots Day, we have it right out in front, we start at 6 o'clock, we'd certainly like to have you here. We'll have music that'll start at 5:30, so it's in front of the city hall, and so we invite you all to come. We have bricks for Veterans Day, so please remember to order your bricks, so in remembrance, if you have somebody who's served in the armed services for us, and it's a way to remember them. And we have November 11th, we're celebrating Veterans Day, so please remember that, and come. Fall Festival, we've already talked about. Also, homecoming for the city, for Atwater High School is also on the 26th. The parade starts at 3:30. And with that, I thank you very much, and the meeting is adjourned.